Okay. One. And we got it. Very good. Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number Three, held on January 24th in the year 2022. This meeting is hereby called to order. I ask Madam Clerk, please read the notice of publication.
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, which is really being held via Zoom, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 6, 2022, posted on the municipal bulletin board, the Borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building. Pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-8, Section B, this meeting will be held by means of use of electronic communications equipment. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, no members of the public shall be permitted to physically attend the meeting originally scheduled to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River. The public, however, is invited to attend the meeting electronically, and the public will have the opportunity to speak. The Borough is utilizing this format in an effort to mitigate the chance of exposure to COVID-19 as a part of the Borough's ongoing effort to slow the rate of transmission and avoid overwhelming our treatment centers.
Thank you. May I have the call parole?
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilwoman Gindy?
Here.
Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Council President Seola?
Here.
And for the record, Councilman Olivera is absent this evening.
We'll have the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I've said you remained silent for a few moments. Thank you. Moving on with our meeting, there are no proclamations, honor, awards, presentations. There is no executive session. There is no agenda session. We're coming to our ordinances, second reading. The first one is 2022-01 for the Part-Time Animal Control Officer. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending an ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain Borough officers and employees in the Borough South River.
Make a motion, wave the full reading.
I'll second that.
It's been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. An ordinance only. Is there anyone who wishes to have any questions or say anything? Can we raise your hand physically or raise your hand by Zoom? We'll wait a moment. You'll of course give your name and address. On first call, second call, third call.
Motion to close.
That's good.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy to close, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Ordinance has been moved by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Thank you.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 2022-02, the athletic lighting fees. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough South River County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough South River so as to amend Chapter 155 entitled "Fees" in regards to athletic lighting fees.
Make a motion, wave the full reading.
I'll second that.
Motion to wave the full reading has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. Please give your name and address. You can ask any questions or make any comments.
Okay, bear with me on this. All right, I am unmuting. I think I'm unmuting. I lost them. Could you please put up your hand again, Mr. Textera? Okay.
He must unmute himself.
I'm, I'm trying to figure this out. Bear with me, I'm not a...
I don't see a...
There you go. It's set up. It's off.
You're good?
Yep. He should have it now, he should be able to talk.
Say something, Tony.
Good evening.
Yep, we got him. Okay.
We got him.
First of all, thanks for, thanks for keeping everyone safe and, and having this meeting virtually. On December 6th, you guys tried passing the first athletic fees for the same, the same kind of ordinance and stuff. At the council meeting, we were told, we were told that we would have a sit-down with, with the, with the Borough to try resolving this together. And we got, you guys, our meeting happened on, we did have a meeting with the Borough. It happened after the first reading. You guys had the first reading on January 3rd, and then we had a meeting on January 4th, where at the meeting, just going over, trying to understand everything. And at the meeting, it was said, I believe by the Borough Attorney, that this policy was made with Future Stars in mind in regards to the policy. And I, you could correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Wyatt. I believe that's, that's what you said on the 4th.
If, are you, are you asking because we're talking about the ordinance right now and not the policy? And that's...
Okay. Well, in regards to the ordinance, the only thing was, I believe, Councilwoman Mira brought up a great point where in regards to the athletic lights, like the Borough owns, they own their own, we own our own electric lights. So we have over nine, over 90% of residents that are part of the group, that are part of the club and everything. So we feel that we shouldn't be paying for the lights. We've never, we've never asked for anything. And it's like, the only ones that are going to get punished for this, for this new ordinance that goes through, if there's nobody, there's no other group but our group, it seems like, from the Borough, from Borough residents or any other, I don't think Pop Warner is going to get affected by this or any other youth organization in town besides ours. We're going to go from paying $0 to now, if this new ordinance goes into effect for three hours that we normally use per night, $125. You know, and that's, that's quite, that's quite a jump from 0 to 125. We've tried to, we've tried to, at the meetings, tried to talk and it's, doesn't seem like you guys want to hear anything we have to say or work with us. You know, a lot of the times it was mostly just Andrea talking, I'm being honest, and things like that. When this ordinance first came to, from nature, I believe, our mayor said it was because of Green Acres. You know, he reached out to Green Acres. The Borough of South River hasn't gotten funds from Green Acres since the late 80s, we were told. You know, so that's, that's a little disheartening that you guys are saying, well, we have to, we have to be in compliance with Green, you guys haven't asked them for funds since the 80s. You know how long ago that was? It was a long time ago. And now, and now we're getting, like, ultimately, it's going to be, we had, we had 120 kids and we were thriving. And if this new ordinance goes through, don't know what's going to happen. So we're, we're not, we're not against paying something, but like, you guys haven't sat down and tried talking to us and, and making it fair. You guys are just saying, this is what we want, and that's it. We're the only one being hurt by this, and we don't think it's fair.
Anything else, sir?
In regards to the ordinance, the policy or?
The ordinance, because that's what we're discussing now.
Uh, no, no, that's it about the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Again, raise your hand or through Zoom. First call? Yes, we see somebody.
I have someone. Ms. Pulaski?
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Hi, my name is Jackie Pulaski. I am an Old Bridge resident. My three children are part of the South River Future Stars Soccer Club. Um, I was a part of a meeting with council members and the Borough Attorney on January 12th. I sent an email as I was requested to do if I had further questions to Ms. Wyatt and the other council members who were on the meeting, and they never heard back from anyone. I emailed them on the 14th and never got any response back as far as my questions. One of the questions was definitely about the lighting.
I think we lost her.
We lost you.
Oh, he's come back. I think Mr. Byrne is raising his hand.
Um, he does not have his hand up.
What is that? Oh, that's me. Okay. Apology. Okay. Anyone else on first call? Second call? Third call?
Motion to close public?
I'll second that.
By Mr. Seola to close public.
I had, I had my head up.
I'm sorry, who was, who was the second?
Mr. Gindy was the second, but Mr. Corcadelis is saying that he had his hand up. I don't see it, Telly.
I don't see it.
Can you, can you guys, can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Hey, guys, sorry about that. I thought I, I thought I pressed the button. As you guys can tell, I mean, whether, you know, I'm an IT guy and I had a little bit of problem getting on here. Jackie just got cut off. You know there's an overwhelming response to this ordinance, and there's a lot of people that would like to make comments and ask questions on it before it gets voted. Unfortunately, we're seeing that we're having a lot of technical difficulty, difficulties with this tonight over Zoom. Is there any way we can table this vote until the first or second meeting in February, where we can have it in person and have the residents actually come up and speak? Because it's, it's just not working during this, during this Zoom session. There's so many people that are, are looking to come in and speak.
We don't see their hands being raised. They can turn on their computer and raise their hand.
We also didn't see mine raised, and I had it raised when you were calling second call.
I actually see two people with their hands up.
Yeah.
Yeah, now. Now the hands are, now the hands, okay, Ms. Pulaski's back.
Yeah, and this is, like I said, this is, you know, it's got a lot of, a lot of people that, you know, have a lot to say on this. And I just think this, unfortunately, the situation we're in with Zoom, I understand why we're doing it, but I would ask the council and anybody up there to, to, let's table this until we can get the parents there to be able to go. There's, there are a lot of people that are just not as technically savvy as, as everyone here or whatever it might be, and trying to get them to speak properly and intelligently over Zoom session. I, I really think this is not the proper form for this, for this vote tonight.
Okay. Do you have any, we'll take that under consideration. Do you have anything you want to say about the ordinance?
I, yeah, I mean, the, you know, I appreciate you guys lowering some of the field fees. I think it's still, you know, something for a, an organization that's been successful with so many kids from South River, having such a great organization and league to play in, I think was great. And, and I'll repeat the comments I made at the last meeting, that, you know, you find this great organization that's doing so much great things for the kids, and instead of saying, hey, how can we help you? Your response was, how can we charge you more? And I just don't think it's right. And I know a lot of people on this call don't think it's right. And I really think that we should give them the opportunity to be able to come up and say that in person, and I think this vote should be delayed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Now, I believe that Jackie is back.
She was.
She disappeared again.
She's there, but she's, her hand isn't up. Let me try to...
Yeah. Madam Clerk, there's, I believe there's Mr. Hassan?
Yeah, it was just...
We're trying to go back to Jackie and talk to her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hassan?
Yes, hi, this is, this is Sayy Hussein. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted to say to second the comments made by the previous individual, Mr. Telly Corcadelis as, as well. There, I'm also someone who's fairly technically savvy. I run a technology, a technology for myself. Pride myself on my know-how in terms of technology, but there is, there's definitely issues going on with Zoom. This is the, the third time I've been trying to connect. And I do think that this is something which, which, which does certainly warrant, since there are so many individuals that are, that have so much to say about this, to have a face-to-face to, for, especially Mayor. You and I, we had met at the Darrell Arkham Ramadan event before this whole COVID crisis had, had come into play, and I really enjoyed the conversation that we had as a new resident into South River. I was giving rave reviews about this, this, the programs and with, with what's happening, especially with our children. This, this particular ordinance definitely puts a, a lot of difficulty on to the individuals that are involved here. So I think it does, it is something that you guys should give a lot more consideration than the way that this is being handled right now. I think the January, the January meeting in which everyone else was involved in, we, we had quite a bit to say. And quite frankly, I was, during the course of the, the meeting, I was taken aback by what we saw as the positive feedback that we did receive from the council members that were there. But quite frankly, after we, after the, and we were actually thinking that this is actually going to move forward and, and we're going to have a, an understanding from, on both sides from, from our perspective as well in terms of what needs to get done. But none of that was done, and instead we were handed, handed over, basically, as, as Coach Tony had said, here's, here's what's going to happen. So there's really no dialogue that was being done. So we would appreciate if, if, if you guys certainly table this topic and, and we certainly, all the community at large gets an opportunity to, to speak out in person on this, because this is something which is very, very important for all of us.
Okay. Very good, sir. Thank you. I believe Mr. Gonzalez is also wished to speak. If you unmute yourself, Mr. Gonzalez.
His hand isn't up.
Yes, it was up before.
Oh.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Two Gonzalez, there's two Gonzalases out there.
I saw the man who has his hand to his face now as the man who wanted to speak. Am I correct, sir?
He's gone.
No, he's not.
No, he's still there.
Unmute yourself.
I'm asking him to unmute.
There he is.
Not yet.
He's still muted.
On your computer, sir, click on the microphone.
Go to your lower left and you'll see the microphone, and there should be a red line through it. Click on that and it will come off.
There you go.
He's gone.
I think he lost him. Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
Not seeing a hand up, and not many people have their video on.
I know Jackie was trying to get on.
Yeah, she's, she put in a chat, she would like to speak, but she's having trouble. Anyone else want to speak?
Then may I have a motion to close?
Make a motion to close.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to close by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. What is the council's decision as to the ordinance?
The ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seola. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as we're seeing, we're having issues with everyone regarding, you know, trying to speak up here. Could we ask the council, is it the council's pleasure to hold this off until the next in-person meeting?
Are you making a motion to table?
I am making a motion to table.
Is there a second? Is there a second? There is no second to the tabling of the motion. So we will proceed to vote. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions for you. Um, Mr. Mayor, as stated by some of the residents out there, you posted on your Facebook in December that this ordinance has to be done, and that is because of Green Acres and the Rossi. Um, you know, I'm very grateful that the council sat down and decided that the fees were way too high to start with, and we lowered them down to 25 for, for the two hours for residents. Uh, I'm asking now, okay, where are these fees going to? So we have somebody put out a permit for the rec department. We collect that fee, where will the money of these fees go to?
Mr. Gindy, do you know that specific answer?
Yes, I do. This would actually go back into the parks and field. The reason being is because we're trying to rehabilitate the actual field. Now, Julie, back in December, no, actually, back in the last meeting, she mentioned something about a study. I was fully aware of that study that was performed back in 2017 by the prior administration. The prior administration put on a study that would cover all of the fields, explain to us what, how, or what we would have to do just to rehabilitate. The study was done in 2018. The problem was, the study showed a significant amount of money that unfortunately, at the time, the administration could not afford. But the DPW still did their due diligence by trying to do as much as they can to actually rebuild the, whatever was done. Since then, like speaking to Tony Tixara, he has said that the fields are in bad, bad shape. And I, you know what, I do agree with them. But for me to fix these fields, although the, the fees at the time that we were trying to push at December 6th was at $75, and yes, it could have been still putting us in a rut, we decided to do what was right by working with him, which technically speaking, is a profit business, full-blown business, and I respect him for what he has. He's running a phenomenal business. But somewhere along the line, just like any business owner should know, when it comes down to running a business, there's responsibilities. There's utilities, there's overhead, there's material, there's things that come with running the business. And I, I respect him for it. The problem I have now today is, although we lowered our fees to a reasonable number, we met with him twice, it seems to still not work for him. But yeah, what he doesn't realize is, this is not only because of him, but this is for everybody else. What he doesn't realize is, there is another league that actually plays, which is an adult league, and I'm yet to hear from them complaining. So they seem to understand. Now, back in the December 6th meeting, something that struck me was, the following day, December 7th, my phone was blowing up because of so many different residents calling. Out of nine residents that might have expressed their opinion on how we poorly let this happen, which, you know, they had their, their opinions, two of them turned around and actually said, if he could do it, why can't I? And this is the problem we have. We're trying to work with them. We're trying to work with everybody, and it seems not to work for him. And unfortunately, I, I got to, I gotta find a way to help this field issue, and this is one of the ways. Although it's still going to be in a rut, this is the way I have to do it. Now, I did hear Julie at one point, matter of fact, Mr. Corcadelis actually said it too, that we own our electricity. You're right, we do. But what you don't know is, although we own it, we still have to pay into it. We still actually have to pay for that. So for example, when you see the streetlights, we're technically speaking, paying for it. So that's what your taxes actually cover. So I'll give you an example. One hour of your light being on, it's .3072, which is equivalent to $19.97 an hour. That's what the town pays into. So I understand where you're coming from. And I'll be the first to say, you're running an awesome, awesome business. But somewhere along the line, as a business owner, you have to understand that it's not easy to run it for free and expect, you know, it to be that easy, like, I guess you could say a walk in a park. You know, there was a comment at one of our meetings, and one of the meetings was, you know, you're doing it for the kids. You're right, we're doing it for the kids, 100%. We're doing it for the kids. It was weird, because in the same meeting, I thought about this, and I kept on saying to myself, all right, so he's implying that whatever we do for kids, we should do for free. So that means a clothing store should just give out their clothes, or a pediatrician doctor should stop charging. It's, it's a business. Unfortunately, it's a business. We're asking peanuts. Right now, we're considered as cheapest in the county. You should look it up. But listen, all I got to tell you is, I know, I know I'm going to deaf ears mostly for these parents, that I understand where you're coming from. I understand, I understand where you're upset, but I'm going to tell you something that, you know, it bothers me a lot, and coming from me being a business owner. One thing I don't do is I don't throw my clients in front of a gunfight. And unfortunately, this is the way I'm getting it. You're, you're throwing all these kids in front of us, but yet you're the owner. You should at least know that there's, like, like I said, there's a responsibility that comes with running a business. Don't hide, I'm not going to say don't hide behind your kids, but try to do what is right for your kids. If you want to run your business the right way, do it. Now, we have tried. All right, I saw an email with different suggestions. You know what? Those suggestions could actually make you the money. That's something that actually could benefit you. Maybe you should try putting it into play for you. Who knows? That could offset your costs. But Tony, you know what? I, I respect you for what you're doing. I, I respect you for what you're doing, but I gotta do what's right for 16,000 taxpayers in this town. And I know that there were quite a few things that you, you pressed on and I mean, one of the things was you wanted me to go from 9010 to 8020. You know, that told me you have a lot of outer towners. And I respect you for having the outer towners, but if you're gonna have that, maybe you should solicit more for the in-towners to offset that cost. That's, that's what I would do as a business owner. All I gotta say is that I gotta do what's right. I mean, I, I was put up here for a reason and Tony, I wish you the best. If you really want to sit down and talk after hopefully, you know, goes your way, we don't know. We'll sit down and talk. So I gotta say.
If I can, Mr. Mayor.
I guess that answered your question.
No, that didn't answer my question at all. Uh, Mr. Zango, where will the money be going to for the permit fee for the field use?
Field use goes into our current fund and then we re-divert it to Parks and Recs the following budget year.
The following budget year. So we're gonna write down all the money that we make from this year. It's gonna go into our general fund. We're gonna spend it on something else and then next year we're gonna put it in our budget. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, because you don't know how much usage revenue you're gonna receive. So we wait till the end of the year and then the following year it's utilized.
What has been the deficit from last year for permitting fees or light fees? What, how much light did we use last year that we keep saying we're in a deficit? Where is that?
I don't understand your question.
So.
What's the deficit?
We're charging light fees for our field, for our fields, correct? That we said at our previous meetings that we were at a deficit. What deficit have we been on from our light fees?
I didn't make that comment, so I'm not sure, but what I think they were saying was that it's offsetting the cost in the electric utility and the use of fields. So I don't, I don't know what deficit you mean though.
How much did we waste last year on field use? On, on the light fees at the field last year?
I, I don't have that number.
So we're putting this in because we're saying that we don't have the money or we're using the money. But we don't even know.
I know what's collected. I know what's collected. I don't know what you mean by wasted. That I don't know, but I know exactly what we collected last year in use of lights and for field use.
Okay, so we have the amounts of times that we use the fields. We know how many times we're on. So how much money did that cost the borough since we didn't charge for residents?
Well, we know what it costs per field. So for example, we did a study for veterans. It would cost about $12,000 a year to maintain veterans' field. Grikowski, when we looked at it, would cost around 7,600 to maintain the field. Vargas Park, it would, it would cost around 4,500 to maintain the field and Dally's would cost around 3,000 to maintain the field.
Okay. What about the light fees?
Light fees every, like Mr. Gindi said, it's about 30.72 cents per hour, runs around $20, 19.97 for every hour of usage. So I don't have how much was actually used less what was collected. That I don't have that number.
Okay, so we're implementing light fees because we wanna receive money, not because we are in a deficit, correct?
Any kind of revenue received offsets a cost that's involved in running either the fields or the use of lights.
Okay, so you, you have a price for each park for maintenance. Is that what DW does regardless?
Yes, that's what DPW does to cut and, and line the fields on certain parks, yes.
Whether somebody's using it or not, correct?
Correct. So anytime you charge a fee, that will offset that cost, correct?
Okay. Uh, again, I'm happy that we lowered the fee from what we had at the first ordinance to the second one. It's down to 25. I'm still, you know, at a concern regarding charging light fees for our borough residents. Um, you know, people go to the park at night. People don't go to the park to play soccer at night if the lights aren't on, correct? But this is for our most, mostly for our borough residents. Uh, we don't have that implemented for them now. You're adding this. It's gonna, um, it is going to affect all the nonprofits right now until they apply for the uh, supposed policy that we have on tonight's agenda. Um, people weren't adequately heard, I don't think, today. You guys saw the amount of, um, residents that came out for the first ordinance today. My recommendation is again, tabling this and I, I'm still, you know, putting all this money, the fees back into our general fund. Um, doesn't guarantee that you're gonna put it in the budget the following year. If the Parks and Rec had a, their own account that we could put our, the permit fees in, then I would say, hey, this is a great idea. We'll be able to maintain our parks with the money that we get from the permits, but you're not guaranteeing that. Are you gonna put in, um, the policy that any money that we collect for parks will be used solely for parks or is that not allowed? Can we add that to the ordinance?
Actually, put down a budget.
No.
If you can guarantee, I don't know.
The budget changes every year. The budget changes every year. Can you add this to the ordinance that any fees collected will be put in the Parks Department for maintenance?
What about the other departments?
No, hold on, Joe.
Wait, we're talking about this ordinance because this ordinance, we're saying we need to charge our residents and people that aren't our residents to use our fields because we need to maintain them. We maintain them regardless, but we need.
Mayor, may I, may I say something? Because we're going around and around and around here.
I'm asking.
Ms. Mayor, what I'm, what I'm gathering, what you're saying is a private company.
Don't tell me what I'm.
Are you willing, you're willing to say?
What I'm saying.
Mr. Seola, wait, let her finish.
Okay.
I'm asking a question. You don't have to tell me what I'm saying. You can gather however you'd like to gather what I'm saying. I'm asking a question. Can we add in the ordinance that any money received from these permits can be directed to the budget in the following year to the rec department? Can we add it in the ordinance, just like, for example, Mr. Gritchinsky just said, what about other departments? Doesn't the, um, the construction department have their fees so they can maintain their department? We know is go into the construction department. So I'm asking, can we add that to the ordinance, Mr. Mayor?
First, let me answer the first question by going to Mr. Zanga. Mr. Zanga, the monies that are collected, will it go to the Parks and Recreation? Is that set or can it not go there?
This, this year when we meet with the Budget Committee, it's there from last year. So it has increased the Parks and Recs budget in 2022. But then we meet with the Budget Committee and the Budget Committee has the final say.
Okay, then.
So right now it is there and we'll discuss it with the Budget Committee, Art and I will, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Okay, so to answer your first question, Councilwoman, uh, yes. It does not necessarily have to mean that it goes there. It is not guaranteed. To answer your second question, yes, the ordinance can be amended to do that. It's not, it would have to force it to do that. Uh, I don't think there's any other ordinance that, uh, any other department has that, but the short answer is yes.
Okay, uh, and just for questions, Mr. Zanga, how much did we have, did we get from last year that's there for this year's budget?
I believe it was 5,500 for use of fields and I believe it was 1,400 for use of lights.
Okay. I just want everybody to realize how much time and money we've spent on something that right now we've only created 5,000 for field use and 1,000. Like where, where do we think we're gonna triple, quadruple? Um, like what amount of money does this borough think they're gonna get by charging recreational use of things? That's just, just my input on that.
Anything else?
Mayor, if I may now?
Yes, Mr. Seola.
So what I'm understanding is that Ms. Mayor wants to have a private company free of charge to use our fields and have the borough residents of 16,000 people and our senior citizens pay for a private company to use our parks and our lights for free. So in other words, if somebody wanted to open up a dance studio for the kids, I don't have to pay or they don't have to pay electric or rent for that studio? And they're a private company making money off their students? So in other words, we're just gonna give any private company that comes in here that's making money our free use and charge back our borough residents and our senior citizens who some, most of them are on fixed incomes, all this money for the use of these parks and these fields. That's, that's what I'm trying to understand. So if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I'm understanding here.
That's your interpretation.
Anyone else on the governing body?
Will we be amending this?
I don't know. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend that all fees gathered for any of the park or recreation fees should be and only used for the maintenance of the fields.
We can discuss that at the budget meeting.
So then you're saying you don't want to do that. You just want to.
Second.
However, you see.
I didn't say that. Don't put words in my mouth like you just said.
You're the chair.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies.
So we're not.
Anyone else who wish to comment? Then roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gritchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Nope.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on with the agenda. Two ordinances, first reading by title only, ordinance 2022-03. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year 2022. May I have a motion to accept as introduced?
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2022-03 on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on February the 7th by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second up.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gritchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we shall revisit this on February 7th. Ordinances first reading by title only, 2022-04. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic regarding restricted parking on Hillside Avenue. May I have a motion to accept as introduced?
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2022-04 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on February the 7th by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gritchinsky. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gritchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Okay, we shall revisit this on February 7th. Ordinances first reading by title only, 202022-05.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic. This in regard to handicap parking on Stanton Street.
Your pleasure on the ordinance.
May I have a motion? I'm sorry.
I move that the council pass ordinance 2022-05 on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on February the 7th by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at a Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
I'll sign it up.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gritchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Council Pres, President Seola?
Yes.
Thank you.
We shall revisit this on February the 7th. Moving on to reports, beginning with Mr. Koch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, not much change in the report, but I'll run through it. The, uh, 2020 and 2021 roadway improvements, again, they will, as we mentioned at the last meeting, they will resume in the spring. The 2022 state aid, we submitted a proposal for that. Regarding the electrical substation, we had a fairly lengthy meeting with the contractor doing that work. They will be providing us with an updated schedule for the completion of the work that's left, which is primarily the sweeps that are decayed and the new cables. A lot of the delay that they encountered was just to not be working on top of the battery project and the, and the folks working on that. Well, number two replacement, no change in that. Our permit is down at the DEP for review. And Councilwoman Mira, I did get your email regarding the brownfields and I sent an email to our two LSRP's at our environmental division. I've asked them if there's a database uh, town by town of any known brownfields. They've not gotten back to me, but as soon as they do, I will reply to you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you. Any other questions that I can answer?
Any questions for Bruce?
I would just say, um, the Environmental Commission is also looking into some of the things that the DEP had sent regarding funding. So if we find anything that um, could help with also the brownfields or, you know, once we do have that information, I will reach out again.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, everyone.
Our head of public works is not here, so I will go to our chief of police. Chief Tenigan, anything to report?
Good evening, Mayor. The only thing I have is, uh, on the agenda are the first readings for the two ordinances for the parking. So if anybody has any questions on that, I can go over that, that next meeting. Uh, also on consent resolution, uh, number 81. It's the authorization for memorandum understanding for municipal parking system. Uh, it's a sys, it's a system that we're gonna be utilizing to help curtail our, uh, issues with parking in the downtown area. There are certain areas in the downtown area that are no parking zones and my officers constantly try to move these, these vehicles from those locations, but it's a, it's an ongoing issue. So we are partnering with Municipal Parking Services on a trial basis to utilize their hardware, the SafeStick. And tonight, uh, we have, uh, with us here tonight is, uh, Ken Wallens, who is the Director of Sales and Business Development with Municipal Parking Services. So if you have any questions, uh, what the system and what the software does, he's here to answer anything.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thanks, Chief.
I have a. I have a question. Ken, I'm sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I I read what what we have on our. Agenda. Would you just be able to explain how it goes about? Or are you just the software? I wasn't sure. I thought this was for our municipal parking lot.
Right. So our company's name is Municipal Parking Services, or we go by MPS. And thanks for your question. So we offer a turnkey solution that includes both equipment. And a service that we provide that includes software. So it's a portal. Just to provide a very quick description of what we have is this is a device that would be placed in front of places where you would never put a parking meter. Because there are illegal parking spots. And we are able to detect when a car comes in and parks parks illegally. We're going to measure the time that it comes in. And we're able to identify when they've left. And for this trial basis, what we're looking to do is help the the chief and the and the police department really get a handle around. The problem of illegal parking. What the duration is for the parking, what the frequency is of legal parking, so it can help inform policymaking decisions. What we're going to do during this trial period is capture the violations that occur. And we're going to send a report over that of that over a thirty day period. And then after that trial period, should the city decide to move forward, there'll be no costs involved. We cover the full cost of our equipment. And we get paid on a per transaction basis, much like a licensing fee that's paid for credit card transactions, for example.
Okay, so would these devices only be put on like public streets or does that entail also our permitted parking area like our municipal lot?
We do have solutions for lots, but currently, as I understand, the plan is just to provide enforcement on on street park.
Okay.
If I may just add one or two comments in here, I just want to clarify for the record that this is just an M O U to do the trial run. No. No fines are going to be issued or tickets are going to be issued. They're just really gathering the data in the thirty day period. And then there are some procedural things that we're going to have to go through. If this is something that council wants to move forward with, once, once the police department has the data, they're going to look at it. And discuss the same with me and then we're going to present it to council if it's something that council wants to move forward with. But at this time, there isn't going to be any any fines issued or tickets issued. It's really just they're going to set up their devices. So they can gather the data so they can give that data to. The police department so they can review it and understand it and and see if this is something that that you may want to move forward with.
Correct.
And if just I'm sorry, one more thing. The M O U is just for the trial period. If you are to move forward with this, it's going to be much more extensive agreement that. Will have to come before council again.
Great.
And I will ask the question, what does M O U stand for?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Anything from our clerk?
No, no report, Mayor.
Good. Ms. Wyatt, anything from you?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Lundenski, anything from the Business Administration Office? Unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates on some issues. You will notice tomorrow. That a crane will be delivered to the battery storage site. And on Thursday, they will start bringing in some of the equipment for that site. At the D P W yard, we're starting our fuel pump replacement. That we started in January of. Twenty twenty-one. It took that long to get the equipment. To replace all the fuel pumps and the monitoring systems. Our roof replacement. That we accepted bids on. The engineer that's handling the project. Is working with the contractor. He now has a pecking order on which. Buildings he's going to do first. He can start down at the D P W. And it's a matter of him being able to get. The products for that. We met with the D E P. Blue Acres Division about the parking issues on Blue Acre Lots. We're working with that, trying to find. And the last is added on ordinance. A, I'm sorry, resolution today. For an interlocal agreement with East Brunswick. As you know, we went out to bid twice for EMS services. Robert Wood Johnson was the only bidder and it came with a large price tag. So we did not accept the bids. In discussion with Robert Wood Johnson and East Brunswick, we've come to an interlocal agreement. To provide the services. We've been on extensions from Robert Wood Johnson. We're going to have a trial period. Starting February first with Robert Wood Johnson. And we've cut the cost about fifty percent of what it would have been if we accepted the bid. That's all I have there.
Okay. Any questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Are possible for us to maybe send out a Nixle regarding the battery storage of what's happening this week? I know. A lot of parents take that route. To go take their kids to school or might not even know what's happening over there. Is that a possibility?
It's a possibility. It's on the website. The project, as far as we know and working with the police department, there will be no disruption of traffic. Everything will be done. Or onsite. And we will not not be doing it before school. Gets in and hopefully be finished before school gets out every day.
Okay, because school ends at one now.
Remembering that, Arthur, that school does get out at one.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? All right then. Looking at my. Here, we'll just go in the order. Why don't we begin with Mrs. Ballas for our council comments? Mrs. Ballas, do you have anything to?
Yeah, the rabies clinic has been rescheduled for March twenty-sixth between twelve and three. Later on during our resolution, we should be voting on waiving any of the late fees until April first. For the pet licensing and tomorrow I will be attending the Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission meeting. So I should have a report from them at our next meeting.
Very good. Mr. Seola?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, the water and ice that we've seen on Johnson Place and parts of Olbridge Turnpike. Was not a water main break. It was a service line break from a resident on Johnson Place. Which was corrected today. I believe the plumbers and everybody were there. So it was not a water main break. Our miniature power outage the other day. Just want to thank our electric utility for their quick response and restoring power. It had nothing to do with the borough. There was a electrical transformer malfunction. From the primary school that caused the circuit to pop and the breaker went off. So once that was isolated, the power was restored very quickly. We had our first budget meeting this week, so our budget committee will be meeting for the twenty-two budget. And our E D C, we had a. Local resident, local business person from Metuchen. Come down who is the director of the Alliance for Metuchen. And he walked the streets of South River and he was very impressed. And he said, we have a great little town. So he gave us a lot of information which he will be. Reiterating again from his report at a meeting in person. The biggest thing that was a takeoff was our departments, D P W, police, fire. Are going to play a very. Heavy. Presence when it comes to the redevelopment. So we'll be working with the different departments at that point, once he comes up with our game plan. And we just started tracking some contractors and redevelopers. So with that, Mayor, right now, it's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gindi?
Thank you. We just had our planning board meeting, which was last Tuesday, the eighteenth. Our new chairman is Cindy Wilk. Our vice chair is Cindy Urbannick. Our next. Meeting is going to be on the fifteenth of February. I urge you to come out and see. Most of the projects are going to be coming to the table. Our next zoning board meeting is going to be tomorrow. Everything is, by the way, is going to be via Zoom. Next zoning board meeting, which is going to be the month of February, will be on the twenty-second. There's quite a few projects that you might want to come see that as well. As a for the D P W, I want to thank them. I know they've been going around salting. Issues, you know, around the town with the buildup of water. I know it's not easy. It's been getting really, really cold. So once again, thank you for doing it. So I got.
Okay. Mr. Gorchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. With the Office on Aging, they are open. Unfortunately, they haven't had any trips or anything else. Because currently the driver is off. And I had been to the D P W today and the borough calendars are at the printers. So expect them soon. There's a lot of more new information in there. The street sweeping schedules, the hydrant flushings by areas and a lot of other useful information. So. I encourage the residents, when you get them, pay attention to it because there will be a lot more good information in there. With that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My library board meeting, the first one of the year will be tomorrow, so I don't have any information on that, but. The director of the library did reach out to me to let me know that still an open position on the library board. So, Mr. Mayor. If you know anybody or if anybody out there watching today would like to be a part of the library board, please. Contact either the director or the mayor. The Environmental Commission met. We tried to meet twice this month, but we had a little issue with our. Zoom meeting the second time, but our first meeting was good. We are looking at our goals for this year and things that we want to get done. Hopefully I'll have more information on that. And I'd also like to thank you for putting Resolution seventy-one on the agenda for today. That would be appointing a junior member. To our commission. We still have one more seat for junior members, so if anybody in high school is interested. Please reach out to Richard Byrne. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I just have. Two things if we could read separately. Consent Resolution number seventy-seven. I would appreciate that. And I had one quick question for Mr. Zanga. Do we by any chance have down? How much we have already spent on well number two so far?
Yeah, we have an ordinance, so I can just print out the ordinance and it tells you what's spent on it.
The ordinance breaks down everything that we've spent so far?
And to rehab, to rehab well, too, yes. Engineering fees and the contractor fees, yes.
Okay. Would you be able to email that to me, please? And that's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else wants something read separately of the consent resolutions? As we are going to go into the consent resolutions. Madam Clerk, number seventy-seven will be read separately.
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty-two oh one authorizes the Borough Council utilize the consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine. And non controversial nature at one time now therefore be it in this hereby resolved that.
Sue. Are we skipping?
Mayor's appointments.
Yes.
Are they? Now they're also down in the consent resolutions. Are they just my appointments?
Um, okay, that's fine that they're, but we, but you're skipping. Public comment.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. My apologies. Public comments. They're a long day. Yes, we open this up to the public. Please raise your hand either physically or as Tony is doing with his Zoom. Please give your name and address and you will be given ten minutes to ask questions or make comments there. So and also while we're doing that, as we're waiting for other people to raise their hands, a question for the attorney, that is a question. These mayoral appointments are in two places. Are they my appointments or are they my appointments with the consent to the council? If you could look that up and figure that out the next few minutes. Okay.
I will do that.
And.
Both of them are your appointments, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll go over them and you can take them out of the consent resolutions. All right. Also, Sherry Garrison does wish to. Have a comment also. So after Tony, we'll go to Sherry, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay.
You guys.
Yes, we can hear you, Tony.
Yeah, you, you, you guys are great spin doctors. Yeah, I'm for profit. I make, I I charge the kids. I, if you go look at the nonprofits that you guys are claiming. They charge more, they they charge more than double than what we're charging. You know, like this all stems from, i- if you guys want to be real, this all stems from you guys not holding your parks director accountable. Because time and time again, how many times have I come to you? What, what do we? She turned, they turn off the lights on us and you've done nothing. Not even an apology. Could any of you at least acknowledge that the lights, the lights got turned off on the kids while they were on the field? Anybody?
I wish caution council not to comment on personnel matter.
Exactly. Don't comment. Don't comment. Hide behind the lawyer because you guys know you guys are spin doctors. We've done nothing wrong. We never, we never came to you guys like, hey, give us this, give us that. We stayed out of the way and did nothing. Nothing. All we did was just show you, hey, she did this a- and you guys are now turning around and and hurting our community. Because we were thriving as a hundred and twenty kids. Yeah, we asked for, I asked for eighty twenty because we were, we might be at eighty-nine percent. And then what are you going to do? And then you're going to charge us the full thing? So I asked to bring it down to eighty percent. We have over a hundred, out of the hundred and twenty kids that we got, over a hundred are from town. We've never hidden anybody. Not every single kid, every single kid has been registered. Over, over a hundred and twenty kids, over a hundred are from town. You guys are going to, you guys have just killed. You guys have just killed. You guys did not try to sit down and work with us one bit. You guys can spin it whatever way you want. I'm going to tell you this. You guys are going to be up for election whenever it is, and I can write the slogan for, I can write the slogan for your opponents. It's very, very easy. You guys, you guys killed, you you guys killed the best program that was thriving in town and we didn't ask you for a penny. We bought our own lawnmower to help out. We painted our own field like our, so you guys, okay, this ordinance just passed. So Varga Park, I want to rent Varga. Do I have to go paint Varga Park now myself and pay for it?
No.
So you guys are going to paint Varga?
Yes.
You guys are going to paint Varga for. Okay, so so let me tell you this. I have a deal worked out with the community next over and they're charging us half of the price. Half. They're charging us. They're charging us less than fifty dollars for three hours to use their field and they don't care if the kids are from China, Japan. Wyoming, Minnesori, doesn't matter where they're from, but yet, but yet you got, you're a great spin doctor, man. You guys can spin it whatever way you want. You let your community down. And and your opponents are going to have fun with this when it's their time to run. But I'm no politician and you and you let the kids down. You can spin it whatever way you want. Spin it and spin it. We tried, we tried. I asked you, you guys have any programs that we could help out? We're willing to do this. We're, you guys don't have anything in place. Your benches are are, go look at the, go look, go drive. I know you guys don't go to the parks and walk around, but you guys drive on, you guys drive on Prospect. Next time you drive on Prospect, take a look to the left at Daily's Pond. Look at those park benches. They're from, they're from nineteen fifties. You guys haven't gotten funds from the, from Green Acres since the late eighties. Since the late eighties, you guys said you guys, oh, we have to pass this because of green acre. You guys haven't asked them for money from the eighties. How could you sit there with a straight face and tell our community? Tell our communities about green acres when you haven't asked them for funds since the eighties. You know how long ago that was? Nineties. Two thousand, two thousand ten, two thousand. Over thirty something years and then we haven't asked you for a pet like we're very, very great. Congratulations. Congratulations. Your, your opponents are sitting, I'm no politician, but they're, they're very, very happy because you killed. Yes, we're a private company. But if you go look at, i- if you go look at the nonprofits, they charge more than double than what we're charging. So congratulations on being a spin doctor, Peter.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
For Sherry.
That's right, Sherry.
Hi, I have a couple of questions. Sorry, I can't bring myself up on video for some reason. In addition to being appointed to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, to my surprise, I was also appointed to the Middlesex County Urban Forestry Advisory Committee and the Watershed Management Area Nine Representative. I'm just wondering if someone can tell me, who do I go to to find out what's involved with these positions? So I'll know whether I can responsibly accept these appointments. I don't know what it entails.
Fortunately, the gentleman who was in charge has left the town. Sue, can you look into that? To see what, what exactly is entailed? And of course, it means going to meetings, but how much I don't know.
Right. I don't know where they are and I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, happy about it. I like the idea. I just want to make sure I can, you know, in all good conscience, say, yeah, I can fulfill this. So Sue, can you get back to me about that?
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to figure out who does what at the county with this.
Yeah, maybe just a name and a number, a couple of names and numbers and I'll, I'll follow up. It's just, I don't know where to go next. Thank you.
All right, very good. Anyone else on first call? Second call? Third call?
More should be closed, so open.
Seconded by Mr. Gertensky, seconded by Mr. Gindy, all in favor? All right, now with me looking at the agenda, we have the mayoral appointments, Environmental Shade Tree Commission Junior Member and the Mayor's Advisory Council of the Office on Aging. So we have those two. And then we'll go into consent resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution Twenty-Two-Oh-One authorizes the Borough Council utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it and is hereby resolved that the listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. So we have Resolutions Twenty-Two- Sixty, Sixty-eight to Twenty-Two- Seventy-six. And then we have Twenty-Two- Seventy-eight to Twenty-Two- Eighty-three.
What is number eighty-three?
Eighty-three is the.
EMS.
Shared services, right?
Yeah, East Brunswick, you shared.
The shared services agreement. Seventy-seven will be read separately. Okay, sixty-eight, except January first, twenty-twenty-two, reorganization council meeting minutes. Sixty-nine, except January twen- twenty-twenty-two, regular and executive session minutes. Seventy, appoint OEM coordinator and deputy coordinators. Are we reading seventy-one, your mayoral appointments?
That's a mayoral appointment, that's.
Okay. A junior member. To the, yes, junior member to the Environmental Shade Tree. Seventy-two, authorize twenty-twenty-two junkyard dealer license. Seventy-three, authorize borough engineer to perform services for electrical utility. Seventy-four, authorize January twenty-fourth utility refund. Seventy-five, authorize state of New Jersey lifeline utility refund. Seventy-six, authorize pet licensing late waiver, late fee waiver. Seventy-eight, authorize contract for emergency veterinarian animal sheltering services. Seventy-nine, participation in nationwide settlement agreements regarding the opioid crisis. Eighty, authorize the bills and claims lists. Eighty-one, authorize a memorandum of understanding with the MPS parking program. Also eighty-two is appointing members to the Mayor's Advisory Council on Aging, which is not part of the consent. Eighty-three, authorize shared service for EMS agreement with East Brunswick. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Miss, by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Gindy, roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes, I will be abstaining from number seventy. And then from the eighty, bills twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-nine-seven and twenty-one dash zero-one-six-eight-two.
Thank you. Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mara?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes, with the extension from eighty on twenty-one dash zero-one-six-eight-two.
Thank you. Now, Resolutions Seventy-seven of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adopting the Borough policy for recognition of sports organizations. Whereas the Borough of South River recognizes that nonprofit youth sports organizations provide necessary guidance, value and support to the youth in the Borough community. And whereas the Borough desires to implement a grant program to offer aid to various resident nonprofit youth sports organizations. And whereas the Borough policy attached here too, as Schedule A, provides for various criteria and procedures in which the resident nonprofit youth sports organizations can apply for the grant and request individualized aid from the Borough. And whereas the Borough of South River wishes to adopt the policy for recognition of sports organizations attached here to Schedule A. Whereas the Borough's, okay, now therefore be it resolved, the governing body of the Borough of South River as follows. One, that the policy slash criteria of recognition of sports organizations is hereby adopted and available at the Office of the Borough Clerk and the Recreation Department. Two, that a certified copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the Borough Administrator, CFO and the Recreation Director.
Your closure on the resolution.
Move the resolution?
Moved by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Seola. Discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I don't think the full agenda was posted. I don't know if this shows up on the Borough website, so I just wanted this to be read separately for all nonprofit organizations that will not understand or know that the fees will go up for lighting fees and field usage in our town. I have a few questions regarding the policy as it's written. I believe this will go to Andrea. In the policy criteria in the general area, in the first paragraph, it says, "The Borough-interested organizations must apply by submitting a grant application through the Borough's Department of Education."
I apologize, that's a typo. It should say Department of Recreation. I'm sorry, which, where, where are you? Yeah, that should be, that should be, and, and that's a minor correction. That should be Department of Recreation, not Department of Education. I apologize.
Okay, other than that, also, you know, the criteria is set here. Like the organa- the organization must be deemed financially viable by the Department of Recreation. How would the Recreation Department decide whether it's viable?
Well, in, in theory, the organization can't be operating in the red because this is, this is something that one of the issues is, is we don't want to say that we are recognizing an organization that is going to collect money from residents and then not put on their program. So it really would just be whether they are operating sufficiently.
Okay, and then there was another one here. So all this information, a grant will be submitted to Department of Recreation. Is there going to be like a form with the application or this is the policy? Is it, how are we doing this?
No, no, so what will happen is there, there will be a form, a grant form that they will fill out, they will attach what is required to be attached, they will answer the questions. And they will submit that to the Recreation, the Department of Recreation. That'll also go probably a copy to Art and Joe. And then, once the grant application is there, you would come to a grant agreement. And that would come before council. The grant agreement each year would come before council via resolution. And you would either, you would adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of the grant agreement.
Will there be like a, can we give organizations, nonprofit organizations, a realistic timeframe of how long this is going to take? My, my question for you is because we have nonprofit organizations that start on certain seasons, like Pop Warner starts in August. I'm just trying to figure out how much in advance will they be needed to set up with us in order for this to be granted? And other organizations, because I, I don't know if everybody else understands here, when a nonprofit youth organization is running, there's not much help. So this is a boatload of information that an organization needs to compile and have people to. So. And with a realistic timeframe of how long it's going to take for somebody to get something like this approved?
So the idea is, is that it would be annually. And once you're recognized, then you just do a renewal application. So, and then it, and in theory, if they apply in January, they would be approved in January. It depends on what they are requesting as additional. If there are additional requests for aid from the Borough, because that will have to be considered on an individualized basis. But the idea would be that it would be an annual thing. They would submit their application. A grant agreement would then be drafted up and it would come before council. Now, ideally, again, it would be within the same month that the grant agreement would come before council. Obviously, if, let's say their season started January fifth and they applied January third and we couldn't get it before council, we can always retro, make it retroactive to the January fifth season. The one, if your, if your comment has to do with the field usage and the lighting, that's going to be prorated to the month that they apply. So if they wait until June to apply, obviously, I would encourage organizations to apply sooner rather than later. But it, but if they wait until June to apply, that's not a problem. What will happen is in the month that they apply, they apply, that will be prorated for the year, their allotment of field use and lights, if that's the only thing that they want. Obviously, they can't request some other type of aid that could have happened in February, in June. But what they can do is that once it's on file, all they're going to have to do is do a renewal application for Janu- for the, for the following January.
Okay, I'm just trying to realistically think about what's going to work this year because it's going to be new for everyone. Here it's mentioned that we're going to have the hours. They'll be exempt for certain hours for the year, for certain weeks. Who's going to keep track of all this?
Your Recreation Department.
I'm sorry, you said the Recreation Department's going to keep track of the field use and light use, the hours?
Yes, for each organization. They should, they should be keeping track of that. There should, there is going to be permit requests still, so she's still going to have, they're still going to have actual permit requests and lighting requests. So, so, but yes, she will, your Rec Department will keep track of those hours.
Okay. Again, my only concern with this resolution is it's great in theory for us to be implementing this since now we gave all organizations a fee. And this is a way to exempt organizations that apply. Nonprofit organizations always have a very difficult time getting people to help. You can ask any of our local organizations how they struggle to get volunteers to even show up for their work bond, let alone, you know, accomplish what they need to for the season. I hope that this doesn't put another burden on our organizations for our youth. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gundy?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mara?
No.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Resolution is passed. Just went through new business. Now to the governing body's comments. I'll begin with you, Councilwoman Mara. Anything to add for the good and welfare of the Borough?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say, you know, you guys got accomplished what you wanted today. People are going to be charged, nonprofits who don't know about this grant are going to be charged. This is going to be a big hassle, even with this policy in place. But this is what you wanted, you got it. I just, moving forward, I hope people stop saying that they are for the children. If we're really just blocking everything that needs to be done for the children, whether it's a nonprofit or a for-profit. We want our residents to use our fields and they're not being used the way they should. They're, they're not even being maintained the way they should. So let's hope that this year, we use the money that got from last year, a whole whopping five thousand dollars for field use and improve a little bit of our fields. I'm sorry, this was poor judgment on this administration this year. But Mayor, you posted it on Facebook, it had to be done. So Green Acres wouldn't find a problem with it. And, you know, the lighting fees didn't have to be done. You guys chose to do that. So one more thing to add to your list. And now with all this bundles of money that we've been saving, I hope we actually accomplish something this year. So I'm excited to see what the budget will bring this year. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I hope to have more information from my liaison meetings that are coming up. And I hope everybody stays warm. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gertensky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police, fire, and especially our DPW who have been out there salting the streets. Especially a lot of the subpumps that have been going have left some particularly dangerous intersections and what have you. And the guys are out there salting right away and trying to make it as safe as possible. With that, I also ask the residents, please be careful as you drive over these spots and everything too, so you don't slide through an intersection, possibly running into somebody else or creating a hazard to traffic. With that, it's been very cold. Look in on your neighbors, keep an eye on them, make sure that they're all right. We've been fortunate as not to have any snow so far, so there's not too many aching backs. So with that, I thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Gindy?
Thank you. You know, ever since December with this ordinance, I know that we've gone back and forth. Unfortunately, Mr. Texara is not too thrilled, not too happy. He is an owner of a business. I've said this before and I'll say it again. Recognizing there's a problem is not easy. I know he's going to do well. I know that he's going to find a way to make this happen. Unfortunately, first problem is recognizing there's an actual problem. The problem is our fields are dis- disrepair. And I'm trying to find my ways to actually bring it back to life. I want to have fields like East Brunswick, Monroe, Olbridge, that's where most of these kids are coming from. And yes, I want to make sure that our lights are going on the way it should be. You know, when you have a mistake that happens and you harp on it, you're never going to move forward in life. My only advice to anybody that wants to come into our town and use the fields is understand that you're running an actual business, whether you're a profit or a nonprofit. And the reality of it is, any politician will say this, that we have responsibility. And like I said before, our responsibility happens to be to taxpayers. We didn't come up here because of our looks, we came up here because of our knowledge, because of our, our will to try to do what's right for this town to the betterment. because of our, our will to try to do what's right for this town, to the betterment of this town. So, uh, with that said, um, I want to move forward. I want to congratulate Sergeant Ed Avalon. Twenty-five years, he just retired. Um, he was a great police officer, he's gonna surely be missed. And, um, unfortunately, uh, under twelve years under his belt, Detective Wesley Sanchez had to, uh, retire as well. He was a great asset to the Police Department as well as to the community. He also will be surely missed. Uh, for the DPW, uh, can't thank you guys enough. I know that salting isn't easy, especially when the freezing keeps on, uh, um, coming below certain temperatures. Um, especially when you have water main breaks. I mean, a couple nights ago, you guys were out there till three, four o'clock in the morning. I happened to, believe it or not, come back from work at one and I stopped by just to see him. Yeah, it's not easy, they, they, to keep our town moving forward. Uh, Police Department does a great job with, uh, protecting us. I know that, uh, tis the season for people out there now breaking into cars. Keep your cars locked, that's the best I could tell you. Uh, other than that, I have nothing else to say, uh, say. Please check up on all your neighbors, the elderly, especially with this cold. And, uh, that's all I got. Uh, one more thing, I know that COVID is still at an all-time high. And I know today was obviously the meeting of the month. So I'm now proposing, since COVID is still here, that we move forward to during Zoom for the next at least month, maybe even March, uh, depending on what the pandemic shows. Uh, so what's your thoughts on it from, to the council?
They, they really don't want us in the, the.
Police station.
At all yet, so I agree.
I'll agree with that also for February.
At least February, yes.
And play it by ear for, uh, March.
All right, well, then if you guys are okay with it, then I'll make a motion on it.
I'll second your motion.
Do we need a motion, Andrea?
No, but you can, you don't need it.
It's gonna be advertised as Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Siola. Any discussion? Yes, resume for the two February meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call, Ms. Minock.
For the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Council President Siola?
Yes.
Then Zoom it is for February the seventh and for the twenty-eighth. Anything else, Mr. Gindi?
That'll be all, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Ballas, anything to report?
Uh, just a couple of things. I'd also like to comment on the DPW workers. I know they were assisting with the Board of Ed. When the, their transformer blew out, they went and checked everything out and then found that the, uh, repairs had to be done by another company, private company through the Board of Ed. Now, I know I spoke maybe with Art. Is it the Commission of Disabilities, did we discuss that? I know people got assigned to it, but when was the last time they actually met? Maybe Councilwoman Mira, were you previously on that one?
And nobody ever met or reached out?
That's what I wanted to know, is that commission still a viable committee? Or why was it formed? I know we mentioned maybe back when we had to, you know, make everything compliant, the sidewalks, the buildings and everything. But if they haven't met, I wonder, is it on the ordinance that we have to, is it in the books that we have to have this committee? Is there a way to check that out for me?
Yes, there's a way, we can do that.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
And then just reappoint new people to belong to it.
Okay, all right, that's it.
Okay. As a matter of fact, come to think of it, I spoke to Teresa Hutchinson about this. She tried to have meetings, but they couldn't get together. So it's still out there. But we'll look into it and see whether or not we can revive it. Mr. Siola?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, just wanna thank our electric utility for the quick response the other morning, getting power restored. And our DPW, uh, for all the work that they're doing, getting the salt out. Uh, the guys are working all kinds of crazy hours. If there was a water main break, I know they've been out till one-thirty, two o'clock in the morning, trying to get everything salted and safe for everybody to commute in the morning. But again, thank you to all the guys for all their hard work and dedication. That's it.
Thank you. Um, for those of you that follow, and maybe if you don't, the South River High School basketball, the boys' basketball team is eleven and one. So continue to root for them. The girls, high school girls, they just had a big win over Spotswood. They're seven and four. Uh, so again, root for them and, you know, go Rams. Uh, February seventh meeting will be, uh, a Zoom meeting. And, uh, I wish everybody a happy Lunar New Year. Is there anything else to come before us?
No.
I have one.
Yes?
I'm sorry, uh, I know Claire Oliver is not here today. Uh, maybe Art could answer this question. With the Rec Department, are we resuming any of the, uh, winter programming? Has there been any decision on, like, did basketball start up again or what about?
All programs are suspended right now. Um, we'll see by the end of January what the, uh, transmission rate is. Uh, we sure don't wanna be a spreader event.
What is our goal? What's the transition rate that we need to meet in order to start up again?
That number is decided usually by the, the State Board of Health.
Okay, so the State Board of Health decides for us?
No.
Okay, I'm asking, I'm only asking this because the, the schools still continued with their winter sports. I'm just looking to see where our Recreation Department is at with our winter sports.
Well, they're continuing with their winter sports without, with a very small amount of people allowed other than the players.
Okay.
So, you know, these programs have more people sometimes than the players in the high school. And it becomes more of a spreader event. So the Recreation Director will look at, um, the rates. If she sees it dropping, there's not a magic number, she has to make that decision. But, uh, we had to suspend it because, uh, there seemed to be some events that caused possibly people to get infected. So we, it was best to suspend until the end of January. Hopefully, this will be, um, going in the downward position. We don't wanna refund to everybody and not, it's not refunding the money, it's giving them the program, the program is important. The cheerleading program can, can start and extend its time uh, with the amount of classes, uh, the wrestling, uh, and the others. Um, it's, it's just a, uh, decision the Recreation Director has to make.
Okay, so that'll fall on her then?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, is there anything else? Hearing done, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Gindi to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Siola, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, we sat adjourned until February seventh on Zoom, thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.